I'd like to call to order the East Point Planning Commission meeting for seven o'clock. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Broll?
Present.
Mr. Laland? Mr. Lubak?
Present.
Ms. Julinski here. Chairman DeHunt?
Here.
Moving on to approval of the agenda, do I have anyone willing to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with some changes. I believe we are removing item C under new business.
Correct.
The applicant has requested that this item be tabled. With that, I don't have any additional changes.
We have a motion with a change, do we have support? We have a motion and support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Lubak?
Yes.
Mr. Laland? Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Chairman DeHunt?
Yes. Moving on to the first hearing of the public. You have three minutes to speak on anything that you wish to speak on. If you are here to speak about something during the public hearing regarding the Nine Mile projects at Huntington Bank, please refrain and leave your comments for that time. Does anybody wish to be heard? Mr. Myron, the floor is yours.
Public hearing number C, is that now or is that, you didn't mention that one?
C is staying in for the zoning ordinance changes.
So, just talk.
New business, item C is the item that's being removed.
Right. Okay, you didn't mention that, you just said hearing.
Oh, sorry. Does anybody else wish to be heard? Anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else wish to be heard? Seeing none, we will close the first hearing of the public. Can I get a motion to approve the meeting agenda, I'm sorry, the minutes of the last meeting of August 3rd?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have support? We have a motion and support? Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Lubak?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Mr. Broll?
I'm sorry, what is this for?
Approval of the minutes of August 3rd, 2023. Mr. Laland? Chairman DeHunt?
Yes. Can I get a motion to open the first hearing of the public, item A, presenting the project at 17011E East Nine Mile?
Mr. Chair, may I step back on the minutes for a second?
Yes.
On page six, it talks about some requirements of a site plan that was approved, I believe, and so if you look on page six of the minutes, sorry, I just lost my spot. Okay, the second and the third and the, I believe the fourth paragraph talk about requirements and they don't really give a timeframe. The preceding paragraph talks about a timeframe, but it's not clear to me, reading those statements, that they all tie together. So I think the intent is for paragraph two, three, and four on page six to be annual requirements, but I think it should be noted, it's not clear to me, reading this requirement.
Mr. Albright, given that City Council has adjusted a number of things in that, how do we, how do you wish to proceed with this?
So it'd be item four, to be clear.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the minutes should accurately reflect what took place at the meeting, regardless of what subsequently happened at the City Council, that's an entirely...
That's an entirely different matter, so whatever took place by this body on that particular date, the minutes should accurately reflect that.
Okay, so the question is on number, items, on paragraphs two, three, and four, then it should, if the intent, I wasn't here, so I abstained, but if the intent was for those to be annual requirements, then it should be noted on each of those paragraphs.
I believe originally, wasn't it meant to be an annual requirement?
Chair?
Yes.
Hi, everyone, thanks for having me, great to see you, great to be back. These are good comments, however, paragraphs two, three, and four of page six are meant to be one-time, one-time conditions, so if there's any excessive crimes, meaning one shooting or five acts of larceny, then the business license will be revoked. And then moving on, if there's any liquor at all consumed, the business license will be revoked. So these are anytime items.
Oh, okay, so there's a cumulative score that, I mean, so five acts of larceny or assault, who's, like, is that, who tracks that then, just for my edification, so I understand.
Chair, well, it was meant to be tracked during the annual report.
Okay, so like, then they'd have a rolling count then? Hey, this is our third larceny or assault.
That was the intention.
Okay, well, that, then, that answers my question.
It was a great intent, too bad it wasn't fact. Any other questions, Mr. Broll?
No, thank you.
Okay. So then we'll move on to the first hearing of the public.
In that case, I would like to open the, all right, make a motion to open the public hearing on the project at 17011 East Nine Mile Road to consider public feedback on the special land use for an additional drive-through lane at an existing bank facility.
We have a motion, do we have support? We have a motion and support, Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Lubak?
Yes.
Mr. Laland?
Yes.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Chairman DeHunt?
The floor is open for the public hearing on this matter, if anybody wishes to be heard in regards to the Huntington Bank remodel, you have three minutes, the podium is yours. Does anybody wish to be heard? If you would please write your name on the piece of paper there and then identify yourself in the microphone for the record.
I apologize, I don't see a piece of paper.
Oh, all right, we don't have a piece of paper. All right, well, you can put your name in the, in the microphone, at least for the record.
Okay, Martin Kramer.
Okay.
And I apologize, I don't know the exact time for me to speak, but...
You have three minutes.
Yes, I, I'm the project manager for the proposed installation of the ATM for the drive-through lane, and I didn't know if this was just for objections from the public or, because we're, I know there's some certain things on, that we're supposed to speak on today about the distance from other dwellings and part of the landscaping, thank you. So I just wasn't sure, not familiar with this much, I'm just trying to represent one of the gentlemen that couldn't be here, he's, he works from out of state, Mike Tichinal, so he asked me to call him on speakerphone, I don't know if that's a thing that we could do possibly, but we're, we're just, we're the company trying to get the work completed, so I just didn't know when was my time to speak or when we were going to go over that.
Usually that would be under new business when we discuss, at this, at this point it's typically for the public to be heard.
Okay.
With respect to it, and then during new business, you have the chance to state your case.
Sounds good, thank you.
So with that said, does anybody wish to be heard from the public in regards to the bank project? Anybody wish to be heard? Seeing none, we'll close the first hearing of the public.
I'll make a motion to close that public hearing on the bank project at 17011 East Nine Mile Road.
We have a motion, do we have support?
I'll support.
We have a motion and support, Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Lubak?
Yes.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Mr. Laland?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Chairman DeHunt?
Yes. Moving on to the second hearing of the public, does anybody wish...
No, item B under public hearings. I'll make a motion to open a public hearing, item B, for the project at 18254 East Nine Mile Road on a Class A non-conforming designation for an automobile repair facility.
We have a motion, do we have support?
Support.
We have a motion and support, Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Lubak?
Yes.
Mr. Laland?
Yes.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Chairman DeHunt?
Yes. Does anybody wish to be heard on this matter with respect to the Safely project? Anybody wish to be heard? Anybody wish to be heard? Seeing none?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table this public hearing, considering that the applicant has asked us to postpone making a determination on this, they've asked for that to be tabled, so I'd like to, at this time, suspend the public hearing and we can resume that at the point in time if they were to bring this back.
So we need to make a motion to table the...
That's what I just did.
I have a question.
Yes.
Was there a notice sent out for this public hearing?
Yes.
For this project?
That's why we opened it, for anybody that wished to be heard, as none wished to be heard about the project.
But if nobody knew that it was going to be tabled by the applicant, I know in the past that we've still done the public hearings.
We just did, no one...
We just did, nobody, no one spoke.
We've conducted the public hearing, there's nobody here to speak on it, I'm suggesting we table it until such a point in time if the applicant wants to bring this back.
Okay.
For consideration.
So we have a motion, do we have support?
I'll support it.
We have a motion and support to table item B under public hearings. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Lubak?
Yes.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Mr. Laland?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Chairman DeHunt?
Yes. Shall I just defer to you?
If you prefer.
You've been taken, it's all.
Chairman, I make a motion to open public hearing, item C, on the proposed consideration of the 2023 East Point zoning ordinance amendments.
We have a motion, do we have support? We have a motion and support, Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Lubak?
Yes.
Mr. Laland?
Yes.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Chairman DeHunt?
Yes. If anybody wishes to be heard on the zoning ordinance changes, now is your time, you have three minutes to speak. You know the routine, Mr. Myron.
Yep, Commissioner, it is. On the overview of zoning districts and zoning maps, Article 2, under land use, there's bed and breakfast slash small-term rental. Small-term rental, does that mean Airbnb? I think Myra might answer that one.
Chill address it during the new business.
I was just curious, because it didn't really say what small rentals are. Okay?
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else wish to be heard? Seeing none, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on item C for the proposed updates to the 2023 City of East Point zoning ordinance amendments.
We have a motion and support. Secretary, please call the roll. We need more forms. Yeah, she's, there's a whole lot of motions tonight.
I'm sorry, I don't, who made the motion, Mr. Lubak?
Yes.
Who supported?
Leo, did you support? No. Who supported?
No one.
We have a motion and support.
And I'm sorry, this was for...
For closing.
Closing, thank you, sorry.
The public hearing on the zoning ordinance amendments.
Mr. Lubak?
Yes.
Chairman DeHunt?
Yes.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Mr. Laland?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes.
Moving on to new business. Item A, consider recommending approval for the special land use request to operate drive-through lanes at bank facility at 17011 East Nine Mile Road. Ms. Broziewske, you're on.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, again, it's good to see you, good to be back. We have the representative of the applicant here today, thanks for joining us, Martin from Powerhouse, right? Yes, okay. So the applicant seeks to construct an additional drive-through lane for a standalone automated teller machine, ATM, at their existing financial institution at two, I'm sorry, 17011 East Nine Mile Road, and to create the space for the ATM, the applicant proposes to remove a row of parking from the north of the site and install a landscaped island with three red maples and eight burning bushes. We have a motion here to consider for a special land use consideration, but I also want to point out that staff was able to find the 1999 site plan for the proposed site, and we need to discuss today, and I can show, I can share my screen, the site plan, but we need to discuss the landscaping requirements that were not met from 1999. The applicant is willing to meet these requirements, but it's just a topic of discussion for the Planning Commission today as we dive into the, for the public, the site plan review. So as we consider our special land use, pending any comments from the public and any information the applicant provides during the meeting, and that City Council changes Section 5169BA, the drive-through facility separation buffer, we recommend the following motion. I'll put a pin in that motion for a second, you're probably wondering, what's Section 5169BA? Well, that language was in the zoning ordinance, proposed zoning ordinance changes, and currently, the updated 2023 ordinance says that drive-throughs must be 100 feet from a residential district, so the stacking space of a drive-through must be 100 feet from the property line of a residential district, and city administration requests to make this change because then no drive-throughs would be allowed in the City of East Point at all. So we reconsidered, recalibrated the standard and thought 25 feet was better for the intent of having drive-throughs in the City of East Point, and that is why this motion is contingent upon City Council ultimately making the final change in the zoning text amendment, which is 5169BA. I'm here to address any other questions about that, but we have the motion on page three, would you like me to go through it?
Before you go through it, I just want you to explain to me, are we in a good place with parking by putting a second drive-through in?
That's a great question, yes, the site is overparked, so...
What is the standard to be considered overparked?
Well, when we go into the site plan review, we can talk more in detail about that, but for now, I'll change to the site plan review. Parking on page 13, parking circulations, so the applicant must provide 12 parking spaces and they propose 18. With the reduction of the, this, the row of stacking space.
So they'd still be overparked?
Yes, they're overparked.
When you were talking about the 100-foot buffer against a residential, can you restate what you said? I don't, I don't know if I heard what you said properly, you said City Council wanted it to be 100 so that there were no drive-throughs?
So City Council wants, well, city administration in the City of East Point wants to have drive-throughs as a special land use request, and with some special land use requests, we add on additional use standards, and I can, if it's helpful, I can pull up the text on the screen if you'd like, but the additional use standard for a drive-through is 100-foot buffer between a drive-through stacking space and the residential property line. So now, that, now, that really means it's exclusionary zoning, no drive-throughs would be allowed anywhere because there's not a 100-foot buffer from a stacking space to residential property within our commercial districts, there might be one or two parcels.
How long's it been, 100?
Since the adoption, a couple months ago.
So, so, so the ordinance really preclude any, any future drive-throughs, really?
Yes.
Okay, but how do we get to that point, though? That it was 100, we went from something that was acceptable to now it's at 100, which will accept nothing, so how do we get to that point?
The research behind the 100-foot buffer came from, I don't have the articles in front of me, but came from research in understanding what is a healthy distance between a residential district and idling cars, and we found, and this is the same fashion that we established buffers for the gas stations, which is in the same, the same section of the ordinance, but we found that 100-foot buffer is feasible, however, that data point ranged, well, we found the 100-foot buffer is recommended, but some buffers ultimately recommended, and it just depends on the urban scape of the city and the size of the parcels. So that was the wrong calibration if the city wants to have drive-throughs.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lubak?
Okay, so what I'm understanding here is, because typically, planning standards are looking at greenfields. We've got wide-open space, we're developing a community where no community has ever existed before, so those are kind of the ideals. However, here in East Point, we pretty much have a built-out community, and what this change is going to do is going to bring our requirements into harmony with what our current existing conditions are, as opposed that, to that pie-in-the-sky dream of being able to build from nothing. Is that correct?
Chair, this adjustment from 100 to 25 feet helps East Point have drive-throughs because, as you pointed out, Vice Chair, East Point is not a greenfield, but still, yeah, that's all I'll say.
Because, just for perspective, a 100-foot buffer would be somewhere between two and three residential lots, depending on whether we are in a location of the city that has 50-foot lots or a section of the city that has 40-foot lots. If you kind of wanted to get a perspective of what that 100-foot buffer would look like.
Yeah, well, the nice thing is, any drive-throughs are going through a Planning Commission review anyways, so we have discretion based on what the site plan might look like in any case, irregardless if it's 100 or 25, so.
Chair?
Yes.
I'm trying to find the article so you could understand the basis of establishing 100-foot buffer, we just didn't throw it out of the air, we looked into some research about this, but right now, what I can find is gas station distances, and what we decided upon was a gas station must be 300 feet away, this is Section 5169 of the zoning ordinance, and what I'm finding here is California Air Resources Board says a minimum distance of 300 feet is recommended between residential housing and gas stations, I also see a 500-foot recommendation and 400 feet, so when you think about drive-throughs in gas stations, you think about car exhaust, idling cars, not so much at gas stations, but still intense nature of carbon dioxide in the air, so you could see the different levels that we chose.
I think without trying to get lost in the weeds and stay focused on what we're talking about, I think the principle of the fact that we have flexibility is wonderful and allows us to do things we need to do. Do you have anything else to add?
Chair, no, just if you'd like me to read the motion on the table.
Well, let's see if the Commissioners have any comments, any, anything from the table? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so there's a motion to, well, we recommend, a motion to recommend conditional approval of the proposed special land use for an additional drive-through lane at the financial institution, 17011 East Nine Mile, based on the following findings of facts with the following conditions, the applicant must meet the requirements, recommendations listed in the planner's review letter dated August 28th, 2023, and the requirements listed in the city planner's review letter dated August 14th, 2023. Below is a summary of key items. The zoning ordinance must be amended to change the required separation buffer or distance from residential district to drive-through lane, the existing ordinance requires 100-foot buffer, this must be changed to 25 feet to move the project forward. Two, the applicant must provide a dimensional drawing indicating that they meet the 25-foot buffer, this means a drawing like a site plan or a drawing within the site plan showing a stacked lane and the residential property line and the 25-foot buffer between the stacked lane and the property line. To improve the community, the applicant is replacing a row of parking spaces with the landscaped island, it is recommended that the applicant bring the landscaping into further compliance with the zoning ordinance as outlined in the site plan review and as obligated in the 1999 site plan that was approved by Planning Commission. To reduce impact on pedestrian and vehicle traffic, the applicant must trim the shrubs along the west property line to maintain accessible sidewalks and driver's sight, and to protect the community from nuisance, the applicant must meet the parking lot screening requirements, there are no screening devices between the parking lot and right-of-way, which must be corrected, and screening was presented in the 1999 site plan. Thank you.
So moved.
Do we have support?
I'll support.
We have a motion and support, Secretary, please call the roll. Any further discussion on this matter?
You know, I do, I do have one more item, I'm sorry, I should have asked this. I believe, I'm trying to find it, that there was a recommendation to increase landscape, and I don't think that was actually in the motion, but if you read down on page, the PDF, page 13, you know, on 13 and maybe it's 12, I guess it's between 12 and 13, there's discussion about adding additional landscape. We, I don't think it was noted in the, which item is it? I don't think it's there. Is it, did I just miss it?
Please.
Chair, this is another good comment, thank you, I think we can, if you feel comfortable, we can talk about the landscaping requirements in the site plan review?
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, did you want to have that as part of the...
It was mentioned here, so I thought I'd bring it up here, but in this review of the, but that's fine, that's totally fine.
Yes, this motion is recommending approval for the special land use to allow this drive-through.
And I believe that we do have motion and support.
Sorry, Chair?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Broll, I'm looking and I see item three of the motion that I read, and I said, to improve the community, the applicant is replacing a row of parking with a landscaped island, it is recommended, you might want to add it as required, that the applicant bring the site's landscaping into further compliance with the zoning ordinance as outlined in the site plan review and as instructed... instructed in the 1999 site plan.
You want to amend your motion to include what you just?
I was just about to say I will amend my agreement with the motion to change from recommended to required.
I'll support that.
We have motion and support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Lubek?
Yes.
Mr. Brol?
Yes.
Mr. Laland?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes? Chairman DeHaut?
Yes. Moving on to item B under new business, consideration for approving the site plan of 17011 East Nine Mile. Ms. Brozushevsky?
Thank you. So provided there's consensus at the commission regarding the special land use review, which we have, and that city council amend again, Section 5169BA, we recommend the Planning Commission consider the motion stated below. This list of requirements contains items that can be reviewed administratively, so no change will significantly alter the design presented to Planning Commission. That means that the applicant can submit these items administratively and does not need to come back to the Planning Commission to gain formal site plan approval. Okay. Motion to approve the site plan for the addition of the additional drive-through lane at the existing financial institution at 17011 East Nine Mile Road. Provided that the applicant receives special land use approval and a revised site plan is presented to the city planner to address the comments during the Planning Commission meeting and the required and recommended motion or conditions outlined in the planner review letter dated August 28, 2023, and the required conditions in the engineer's letter dated August 14, 2023, within two months of Planning Commission approval and based on the fact that the site plan is generally in compliance with the ordinance. Listed below is information needed for site plan conditional approval and waivers. So, one, address any concerns by the fire chief, if the fire chief are here. And, two, provide a north arrow on each sheet. Three, provide a photometric plan that meets ordinance requirements. So this is just a detail of lighting and the brightness of lighting on the existing building and within the parking lot. Four, provide the color and material for the dumpster enclosure facade that meets standards in the zoning ordinance. Also provide the paving material for the concrete apron. Five, provide public right-of-way and parking lot screening devices that meet ordinance requirements. This is outlined in Section 5204D. This means planting more bushes or adding a three-foot screening wall. Six, provide landscape plans that are prepared, sealed, and signed by landscape architect. This is a requirement in our new zoning ordinance in landscaping section to have all site plans signed, sealed, delivered by a landscape architect. And this is because having a landscape architect on the team helps the city have a professional, well-manicured, landscaped city parcels. And that just adds the further element of the business district and the corridor and the design of the community, also the greening of the community. Seven, provide a below-grade landscape island. This is also a new requirement in the landscaping section of our ordinance. A below-grade landscape island helps the trees and plants provide water for themselves. Eight, provide dimensional drawings indicating the plantings are no closer than four feet to the property lines. Nine, provide grass species for the proposed landscape island. And 10, provide the necessary notes in the site plan indicating that you will meet all landscaping requirements as outlined in the planner review letter. Landscaping must be planted within 30 days of receiving the certificate of occupancy or business license. So those are the conditions and more information that we need from the applicant. And then we have two considerations for waivers here today for you guys, planning commissioners. One, grant a waiver to allow the site to continue existing without the required loading zone. We deem, as we describe in the review, that a bank does not need a designated loading zone, so you have the right to waive it. And then, two, is per zoning ordinance standards, the site is required to have 31 deciduous trees and four ornamental trees. 19 deciduous trees are required as part of the non-paved surface area requirement, at least one deciduous tree is required in the parking lot, 11 deciduous trees are required in the street frontage, and four ornamental street-fronted trees are required. So that's a total of 31 deciduous trees and four ornamental. However, since this project is minor in nature, it's adding addition of an ATM machine, it is recommended to waive some of these requirements. We recommend that the applicant plant one deciduous tree in the exterior existing landscape bed, which is what was presented in the 1999 site plan approval. Be 11 deciduous frontage trees within the front yard and public right-of-way, and C, four ornamental street-frontage trees within the front yard and/or public right-of-way. And then I will add on that we require D, they must exceed or meet the 1999 site plan standards.
So moved.
We have motion.
Were we going to hear from the applicant?
No. Do you have any comments, sir? All right.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
For the applicant. Is the ATM?
If you would take the podium, please.
It's a simple question, but I'm interested. So I believe currently you have an ATM on the inside, then you have three drive-through lanes, right? You're installing a fifth lane. Is the fifth lane going to be the ATM or is the ATM getting shuffled anywhere? What's the lineup of the rows?
Can I take a peek at this? It looks like the ATM will be the fourth lane.
Out of five?
No, the fourth and last.
The last one, okay. Okay, that was my only question. I was just curious about that. So thank you.
Okay.
Chair, there's an additional bypass lane. That's X as a buffer between the ATM lane and the landscaped island.
And I actually have a question for you. So I know that we were talking about no loading zone, and I understand that every currency is becoming digital, but do we not need something for a armored car or an armored truck? I mean, do we never deliver change or anything like that? Is that something that we need to take into consideration? Or are they just going to pull up in front of the building and do their thing and we?
Chair?
Please?
Yeah, I believe that we do not need permanent loading zones because they are temporary use, and so we do not need a dedicated, permanent, physical space for a loading zone. We can use that space more efficiently and just have the loading times occur maybe when it's not high peak of operation. These are all standard procedures that I'm sure the business already implements.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
My only comment would be that this is, this type of upgrade really makes a lot of sense in today's world for a bank, adding another lane, knocking down the, we did knock down the requirements in the parking spaces, but they were overparked. This is a perfect fit for that, so.
All right. I believe Mr. Lubek made a motion.
I will second it.
We have motion and support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Lubek?
Yes.
Mr. Brol?
Yes.
Mr. Laland?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes? Chairman DeHaut?
Yes.
Congratulations. Tell your boss you're a friend. Moving on to item D under new business, consider recommending approval of the proposed zoning ordinance amendments. Are we ready to sweat this one out?
Let's do it.
You're up.
Thank you. This is a fun meeting, if I may say. Okay. So as we know, zoning ordinances are living documents and must change to reflect current city policy initiatives. Additionally, a city's code of ordinances is a vast document that may have some conversing discourse. I'm referring to the entire city's general code of ordinances. It's a vast document that might have some conversing discourse. To reflect current city policy and revise contradicting intra-ordinance discourse, we propose the following zoning ordinance recommendations. So I can, is it helpful if I pull this up on the screen? Okay. Good thing I'm ready. Great. So I can either pull up the ordinance changes or the memo. Maybe the memo is most fruitful for this conversation. Okay. But so we recommend the first item, Article 2, is a reorganizing tactic. I probably should just show you guys for the visual to see what we're trying to do here. But... And here it is. Okay, so we propose this column intent statement at the beginning of the city's code of ordinances, so they act as a definition of each different type of zoning district overlay. Previously, this column didn't exist, so we're proposing to add it. Front and center. Okay. The next item is to add smoke shop as a distinct use in the master land use table and assign it as a special land use within the mixed-use one, mixed-use two, downtown, mixed-use three districts. Additionally, we want to end mobile vending and outdoor sales as a use and allow as a permitted use in each district. So we go to the table. Smoke shop. Here we go. And we also added a double asterisk, which means that these items have additional use standards. So that triggers the applicant or a planner to look and look up the smoke shop and make sure that when a smoke shop proposal comes through, they're meeting the additional standards like a drive-through has. Oh, I should add it to the drive-through. Oh, good catch.
Now, would a smoke shop also include a marijuana facility?
No.
Nope.
No, it would not. And we can go, that's a good question. Thank you for moving the dialogue forward. Let's go down to our glossary changes. Smoke shop, retail establishment with a primary purpose of selling tobacco or tobacco-less vapor products with nicotine, which includes but is not limited to electronic cigarettes, e-cigarettes, e-cigarillos, e-pipes, e-hooke. If you want, we can add a line that says this does not include marijuana products.
I wouldn't mind that.
Okay.
I have no objection to that.
That statement? That's fine, sure.
Considering we have a whole ordinance that addresses marijuana.
And none open. And they were all in a rush.
Well, thank you for helping improve policy tonight.
Can I ask a question on this particular item?
Yeah.
I'm going to anyways. So what is the logic behind adding smokes, smoke shops with a certain buffer? What is the logic there?
That's a great question. So, smoke shops, we've seen smoke shops arise in more sensitive areas of our community, like near schools, especially the high school. And the planner, one of my planning colleagues and city administration, thought it prudent to regulate them so that we don't have an overabundance of smoke shops near schools, daycares, in sensitive areas.
I'm not opposed to it, but I find it, you know, rather, it's interesting. You can have a gas station or a party store, and they're selling the exact same product. So, you know, in a sort of way, I don't, I don't buy it, but at the same time, I'm not an advocate of, you know, cigarettes and all those types of things. So it doesn't really bother me. I find it, it's just, it's an odd premise that we're going to say, this business sells you cigarettes, can't be here, but another business can sell you the same product and be there. Kind of strange.
It's a double standard.
I, I'm not opposed to the smoke shop. I'm not, but, you know, it's, it's an odd thing, so.
Chair? Yeah, great point. If you'd like, we can look at establishing buffers on the same buffer. What is it? Let's look at the additional standards. Okay, so again, on this item, add additional, add separation standards. A licensed tobacco shop cannot operate within the buffer district, which is defined as an area of 50 feet from any private or public preschool, elementary, secondary, trade school, college, university. A smoke shop cannot be closer than 1,000 feet to any other smoke shops. So we can add that same separation standard to gas stations. And I think there is some language in there, gas stations can't be close to a certain amount of feet from another gas station. And liquor stores.
I think the concern is, you know, we're going to regulate smoke shops and where they can go in reference to schools, but yet you can cross Nine Mile and go to the gas station and get tobacco. But yet, we're going to tell somebody who owns a tobacco store, oh, no, you've got to be 500 feet away. But yet, these kids can cross the street and go to the Amoco and pick up a packet of smokes. So how is that equitable to a business owner who's putting a smoke shop in? Now, I'm not, I'm not trying to encourage, you know, smoke shops going up all over the place. I'm just looking for a fair and consistent application. Please.
Chair, yeah, so I'll just maintain my previous comment. If you're interested, we can add the same separation standards to gas stations and liquor stores. But as it relates to existing gas stations, liquor stores, smoke shops, we can't regulate those. Those are existing non-conforming uses. However, if they do decide to expand upon their use or structure, then the Planning Commission can review their, their application again as they consider Class A non-conforming uses.
So if it's a non-conforming B, which everything is right now that's non-conforming unless it's an A?
Yes.
So if an existing gas station is currently a B and they have a change of ownership, what happens?
Chair, if there's no increase in intensive nature of the use or increase in structure, then they're allowed to transfer their ownership.
Okay.
But such as that gas station on Kelly Road that's supposed to be expanding at some point, that would have required change, correct? The marathon station that has been on perpetual hold, it seems like? Okay. Ms. Lubek?
Okay, we're talking about retail outlets that sell tobacco products. We haven't included in this some dollar stores that actually do sell some brands of discount cigarettes. We haven't taken into account pharmacies. We haven't taken into account convenience stores. And we haven't taken into account grocery stores, all places where you can buy tobacco products. Are we now going to have this overwhelming group of people out with tape measures measuring distances between places that sell tobacco products to see that they're going to be in conformance? It seems like this thing is becoming to the point of, in fairness, being way too burdensome.
Chair?
You're on.
Thank you. These are good comments. It's up to you. I'm, I'm representing the, the thought process behind making this decision, and the thought process was that ultimately, we as an entity don't want to see dedicated smoke shops next to sensitive areas. Grocery stores, pharmacies, gas stations all sell different items. But this is up, up to you, not me.
Can, can you tell us what is the current code for liquor stores and party stores? I'd be interested to know what that buffer is from residential and/or sensitive areas.
Chair?
I think it's a hundred.
Okay. Well, I don't have, I don't know the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, if they have any codes, probably in residential areas, for party stores. City Attorney, do you, do you know the process for businesses to obtain a party store license? Is it approved by the Michigan Liquor Control Committee, Commission?
I believe it is. I just don't have those buffer requirements handy or memorized.
Yes. I don't have them either.
But don't we have an ordinance? What's our ordinance? I said, I'm sorry, maybe I asked the question wrong. What is our ordinance on the buffer?
So, Chair, additional use standards for commercial businesses, and we could add more additional use standards. But additional use standards for commercial businesses, we have, gas stations have additional use standards, drive-through facilities, landscape nurseries, and smoke use standards, drive-through facilities, landscape nurseries, and smoking lounges. That's it. So if we wanna add other uses, we can add...
Okay, okay. I'm envisioning a location on Nine Mile Road where you have a gas station that is selling tobacco products. You walk across the side street and you're now in a party store that is selling tobacco products. Which is really what's under question here, is the tobacco and smoking products. And is that a separate licensing that has to take place for a retailer to be able to sell tobacco products? Either Ms. Brashewski or Mr. Albrecht.
I do not have the answer for that, to that.
I'm looking up the Liquor Control Commission.
Okay, I wasn't thinking liquor, I'm...
If we're interested, we also don't distinguish party store in our use table. So we wanted to add the use party store or liquor store. Now would be the time to do it.
Didn't we have something that, maybe not party store or liquor store, but for a, a business that sells liquor? I thought that there was some requirement.
Chair, we have bars and nightclubs.
I'm probably wrong, though.
This is a good conversation, though. Thank you.
Might I make a suggestion tonight, if we're gonna move this forward, seeing as there seem to be so many questions, that maybe at this point, we temporarily remove the smoke shop sections of this, and we can revisit them at a later date when we can have more answers?
I concur. It's too, it's, it's too muddied.
Chair, can you please elaborate on what questions you have regarding smoke shops?
Well, the inconsistency, I mean...
The inconsistency between an exclusive retailer and a retailer that also sells the same product.
Now, is the definite, what was, what was your definition of a smoke shop? A shop that exclusively sells tobacco, or does it...
Retail establishment with a primary purpose of selling tobacco.
I don't know, it just... I'll defer to you, it just seems too muddy to me.
I think the idea was well-intentioned, but just maybe not picked apart by the devil's advocates.
I, I could tell you which part of I do like. I like the 1,000 feet from another, another same type of unit. That's, that's the part of it that I would say I like, other than that.
That's where I was going with it earlier.
I was just, yeah, yeah.
We had a buffer that ultimately got changed.
Sir, if, if you wish, I'm sorry, but if you wish to hang out with us, you're more than welcome, but you're free to leave if you... Okay, all right.
I mean, at the end of the day, we want, we want people to make the intelligent decisions they want to make, and if they want to buy nicotine, or if they wanna drink alcohol, they, I mean, so for me personally, the thou, you know, the thousand would be the part that makes sense.
Chair, our Community Economic Development Manager, McCain, just found some research that the city of Portland conducted, and they, they changed their ordinance to restrict smoke shops, just how we're proposing within this memo, but 1,000 feet between other vape shops and 300 feet buffer from childcare facilities, community centers, and other places frequented by children. But...
Children frequent houses, too, don't they?
I, I'm gonna defer to you. I would, I would also agree that I like the 1,000-foot buffer, if anything.
Is there any further discussion on this?
Chair, it is 1,000 feet for medical marijuana facilities. I think that was still a question up in the air. Yeah.
Thank you.
Looked it up.
Yeah, that's good.
I'll defer to my compatriots here, because it's still, to me, is muddied, but...
Okay, for whatever it's worth, I make a motion that we remove smoke shop portion of these changes until a further date when we can get a better discussion and more data on how this is all gonna interplay with all places that sell tobacco products.
We have motion, do we have support? Smoke shop.
Yeah.
We have motion? We remove?
We're removing it for sake of trying to move these revisions forward. Obviously, we can bring it back as a separate discussion in a different revision proposal.
Ms. Brashewski's chomping at the mic. What's up?
Chair, so the planning commission can always adjust this text, so we can proceed with any changes. So I'm hearing that we don't want the 25-foot or 500-feet buffer, but the 1,000-foot you do like. So we can proceed with that as we make one swoop of changing the ordinance and also add in liquor stores and, was there another sensitive use? What?
I wasn't necessarily advocating, I was just trying to understand what the requirement was there. To be clear, we had nothing on smoke shops before today, or before this ordinance, correct?
Can you repeat that, please?
We had nothing regarding smoke shops before this ordinance went into place in June or July, right? Is that true? All right. So I would, well, there's a motion, so I'll withhold until...
We're waiting for support. Anybody wish to support? I believe the motion just died.
So I will make a motion to put, maintain the 1,000, the 1,000-foot barrier, but I'm gonna remove the rest of the requirement.
We have motion, do we have support?
I'll support it.
We have motion and support. Thought we had a dead body on our hands.
Michael, say that again.
So I guess the, can you go back to the language, Mara, please? So my motion would be that a smoke shop cannot be, Mara's highlighting, cannot be closer than 1,000 feet to any other tobacco or smoke shop.
Measure from property line to property line.
Let's not call it tobacco or smoke shop. There's, the definition in here of a smoke shop, so it'd be of any other smoke shop measured from property line to property line.
Would it be onerous to go so far as to say cannot be within 1,000 feet of any business that sells tobacco?
Then you won't have any smoke shops. Okay. Well, then, if that's the case, then just say we, then cut out smoke shops.
That was the problem that I was referring to with party stores and drugstores and dollar stores.
So a smoke shop is defined, is, can you go, Mara, would you scroll to the definition of a smoke shop, just so we can be sure we're not excluding other companies we don't want to exclude? Retail with a primary purpose, okay, I think that's pretty clear, right? I can't think of any other business that has a primary purpose of selling tobacco. I can think of a lot of businesses that sell tobacco, but it's not their primary purpose.
All right, we have motion and support. Secretary, please call the rule.
Before, could you repeat what this motion is?
Mr. Brol.
Yeah, can you scroll, I, I will give you verbatim, can you scroll back to the... Thank you. So the, the motion is a smoke shop cannot be closer than 1,000 feet to any other smoke shops measured from property line to property line.
So essentially, you're making a motion to leave it as written?
No, I exclude, I, I did not include any of the stuff that's listed above, that portion of Article Four.
So you don't care if they're within 500 feet of a school, preschool, elementary, or secondary school?
I wouldn't say I don't care. What I would say is, is right now, they can be there. So we're, we're, changes, we're improving, we're creating a, a greater buffer, and as we've heard earlier, we can always come back and revisit this. So you're free to revisit it at any time and include a buffer if you like.
Well, in that case, I'll be voting against this, because I'm, might as well leave this in, 'cause we could change this at a later point.
But you can change any ordinance at any time.
Right.
All right.
I would prefer to button it down and move on.
I concur. We have motion and we have some support.
As I said, I, I will be voting against this, 'cause I just assume leave it as written.
Secretary, please call the rule.
Mr. Brol?
Yes.
Mr. Leland?
Yes.
Mr. Lubak?
No.
Ms. Julinski, no. Chairman DeHaan?
No.
Next up.
Okay, thank you. Would the commission also like to consider adding additional use standards for a liquor store or party store, or differentiating between a retail establishment and party store?
If something wants to be proposed and brought forward at another time, I'm not going to object to that. I think she's looking for a consensus tonight as to what her future actions may be. Not that we're gonna have a long discussion on it tonight.
I personally don't need any ordinance on that, no, neither do I.
Yeah, good. Okay. I'm hearing that you would, you not would like, you would not like any additional use standards for a liquor store, party store.
I believe that's what the consensus is.
Okay. Moving to Article Four, this is the topic of the hour, update the standard to allow drive-through facilities to be 25 feet away as opposed to 100. Okay? Article Nine, we have provide definitions of shrubs and add requirements for flowering plants and grasses. Previously, or right now, we just have, the applicant must provide plants, but we don't say how much. So we say that we provide some requirements for flowering plants and grasses, and we also reduce the screening green belt size from five feet to three feet, just due to the smaller-natured parcels of East Point.
Can you tell us what you mean by provide definition of shrubs and flowering plants? Like, are you gonna say you have to have daffodils, you have to have this type of plant? Where do we draw the line?
No, that's... Okay, so, Chair. I just added language here, like ornamental flowering trees, shrubs, evergreen or flowering bushes, and flowering plants and grasses. So I just added language in parentheses to help determine what we really mean. And the flowering plants and grasses are incorporated in some amount, the amount is at the discretion of the landscape architect.
Thank you for answering my question.
Thank you. Okay, so then we have Article 18, temporary uses. This is the bulk of the updates. And then, if I can put a pin in that for a second, just as we can finish off this table, 19, Article 19, we're updating some definitions here within the glossary. So we updated parking lot, parking structure, to show that we really mean, but it's just for parking and no storage of cars. And we added definition for mobile vending, which we didn't have, and I just provided of these definitions, too, which should be underlined.
I'm curious, on the parking lot issue, I understand you're trying to, I understand that we would like to, and I agree, that we don't want people parking their car in a parking lot for extended periods of time, which is defined as 24 hours or more. My question to you is if, like, we were, you know, next to an airport or a bus terminal, which we could have a bus terminal, terminal, I mean, what would, what would be, would there be a third line in there called long-term parking, or what, how would you differentiate that? Like a parking lot, right, we're thinking you, you go to Rite Aid and you're in the parking lot, and it's not meant, but there are parking lots that are meant for longer-term parking. I'm just curious, how would you change that? An airport or a bus terminal, yeah, right, so...
Thank you, Chair. So that would be a definition of the use, if we wanted to add a bus terminal as a use, that would allow for long-term parking. So the definition of a bus terminal would be, well, a facility that coordinates transportation through buses.
Maybe I asked, well, I'm just saying, like, you have, you have a term, parking lot, you have another term called parking structure. What would you call the, the term for a long-term parking? Or would you add it into the parking lot definition, change that definition?
Chair, we can add a line that says this does not include, like, in parking lot, we could say, in parking structure, we could say this does not include uses that have long-term parking.
It doesn't, it doesn't relate to East Point so much, so I'm not concerned about it, I'm just asking a question in a broader sense. What would you do if we did have long-term parking needs? Right? 'Cause you don't have, there's no, the way it's written right now, there's no provision for long-term parking. So my question is, what would you do if we did have long-term parking needs? That's all.
amend the ordinance.
I'm asking her what her amendment would be, I understand that.
Chair, I would provide a use definition for bus terminal or long-term parking and define what I mean by long-term parking. So it would be a use, and then the glossary would contain the definition.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lubak?
Okay, in this parking lot definition, I have a big issue with 24 hours. And let me explain why. I can think of at least five auto parts stores in the city that have delivery vehicles. Typically, in the auto parts supply industry, to the repair shops like that, those vehicles are likely to be parked by 5:00 PM on a Saturday and not used again till 8:00 AM on Monday, which far exceeds the 24-hour limit. Likewise, you may have some other businesses that operate Monday through Friday, let's say they complete their business at 5:00 PM on Friday, however, they do have a couple delivery vehicles for whatever reason, and those vehicles may not be moved and used again until 8:00 AM on Monday morning, again, far exceeding the 24-hour limit.
So would that, can I ask a question and clarification for that? So if it's a vehicle that belongs to that business and their... So, if it's a vehicle that belongs to that business in their lot, would that not be different than Joe Smith parking his car there for over 24 hours?
Storage is defined as vehicles left in a parking space for more than 24 hours. Plain and simple, if it's there 24 hours and one minute, it's considered storage, and that's not permitted.
We had the conversation...
I don't want to create a situation where we are causing businesses with a legitimate need for vehicles.
Right, that's why I'm saying if it belongs to the business...
To be in violation just because they're operating within their operational model.
So, we need to clarify if it's your business vehicle that's excluded from, or that's an exception to?
I brought this exact issue up when we were going through the ordinance, and the answer was sort of to the impact of, don't worry, we wouldn't... I mean, the city's not going to enforce something like that. That's the answer I got, and that's the same way we would apply this. I bet that's the answer as well.
I can think of a perfect example of a vehicle. Of all places, the 38th District Court. They have a court officer's vehicle, and that thing gets parked, and it stays in that parking spot, sometimes considerable days between use. And definitely over weekends, I know the police department has vehicles that are not daily used, and they're in a parking space for longer than 24 hours. And on this definition, and I do realize I may be splitting hairs here, but they, under this definition, are considered being stored, which is now not going to be permitted.
Yes?
Chair, okay, so this is a great conversation, and we can revise this definition. So, I'm hearing that maybe we want to increase it to 72 hours, and we could say, to Commissioner Julinski or Secretary Julinski's point and Commissioner Broll's point, maybe we exclude business, vehicles that are dedicated to a business?
And municipalities.
And municipalities.
Because in theory, every one of the black code enforcement cars would be...
Oh, thank you. Yeah, that's another good one.
Would be in violation.
Which one, post office?
No, and post office. Code enforcement.
Oh, yeah.
We should go and ticket each one of them then on the weekend.
If we define it as... If we change the definition of the vehicle being parked, then I don't think we need to adjust the hours.
Agreed.
Chair?
Yes.
So, we can amend, no storage of vehicles is allowed except for private business vehicles and municipal vehicles.
Or government vehicles, because you've got the post office.
Or municipality.
Not really. It's still the federal government.
Especially with Monday holidays.
Public.
But...
Can you repeat that, please?
Okay.
Let her repeat it first.
Okay.
Chair?
Please.
Thank you. No storage of vehicles is allowed except for the storage of private, municipal, or government vehicles.
I guess my downside to that one is, so I can take my municipal vehicle and go park it anywhere, and it's exempt. Or the post office could go and park their vehicles in any lot and have them be exempt.
Chair?
I guess what I'm saying is, do we want to tie the longer-term parking of the vehicles to the business with which they are... Business or activity with which they are associated?
Okay, Chair, storage is defined as vehicles left in parking space for more... Oh, sorry. No storage of vehicles is allowed except for the storage of private, municipal, public, government vehicles when they are parked on corresponding property.
How do we like that?
It sounds too legalese to me.
Well, they like legalese.
It's like very unenforceable. What are you going to have somebody drive around, and every four days, you're going to say, that car was there?
Chair, the intent of this definition clarification is to demonstrate to the public that parking lots are not for vehicle storage, like sales of cars.
Or Big Boy.
Chair?
I think the way, actually, when we had this discussion previously, the way it landed was, had it... The way the statement was more designed was revolved around...
Residential.
As per the permission of the, you know, whoever owned the land or that... So, in other words, you understand that sometimes you have a car there, and it could be there for a long time, but if that's the owner's intent, that's not wrong, and that's what you want to have happen. So, it's more about the intent of what the owner wanted, right? This, to your point, you don't want Joe Public just parking in a parking lot and keeping their car there. That's not the intent. That's not the owner's intent. That's the way we left it when we had this discussion three, four months ago.
Okay, I'm having a thought on some much simpler language, if I may attempt that. Storage is defined as non-business-related vehicles left in a parking space for more than 24 hours.
Can you read that one more time?
No, I can't read it, but I can restate it.
Can you restate it one more time?
Storage is defined as non-business-related vehicles left in a parking space for more than 24 hours. I think it's a much cleaner way to say all of what had previously been hammered out.
Did you get that?
So, if a business owner... I know we're cutting ears here, this, you know, but if a business owner wants to give permission to their neighbor to park in their business parking lot, they can't do that because it's not a business-owned vehicle.
That is correct. Because then it becomes a storage lot just because the owner says, well, you can store your truck there, and you can store your camper there, and you can store your ATV there. It has to be a...
If the owner's brother comes in from... He was this example. The brother's owner comes in from Indiana, drives in, and he's going to be there for two days, he can't park his car there.
Gentlemen, I think that we took a lot of hours on this last...
We had this...
Well, in which case...
We had this discussion already.
He would have his brother move the car every 24 hours.
It's fine. There's going to be no enforcement on it. I understand that.
The enforcement is not likely, but I don't want to create a problem where we shouldn't be creating one, like the examples I had, we had previously stated. So, did you...
Did you get that?
Chair? Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, what was the exact language again? Can you read that, so it's clear?
No storage of vehicles is allowed for non-business-related vehicles left in parking spaces for more than 24 hours.
Is that legal enough? Sounds good. I do have a suggestion, and the commission can take it for what it's worth. The language could also include, no storage of vehicles is allowed, period. The foregoing prohibition is not applicable to the storage of commercially-owned vehicles associated with the subject business, location, or publicly-owned vehicles stored on government property.
Well, doesn't that sound...
Jurist doctor down there?
Partner.
Thank you. Can we acquiesce to that?
I'm okay with that.
It accomplishes the task, and I just thought of another monumental headache that we could have had with this one, when I think about the bus garage on 10 Mile, where school buses were parked for far more than 24 days.
Illegally.
Or at least, they would have been under this ordinance.
All right, so I think we have consensus here.
All right.
Moving on.
Sounds good.
Okay. Chair?
Please.
City Attorney, can you send me that comment?
I wrote it. I'll email it to you tomorrow.
Yeah, or take a picture.
I'll send it to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
I have a question for Mara on the mobile vending. The act, usually food, do we need to include that? Because I know I seem to be seeing more and more like boutique trucks also that are mobile. Do we have to have usually food in there, or is it... Doesn't what you state just cover all trucks, no matter what items they're selling?
Chair, yeah, that's a good point. This was just used as an informal example.
Okay.
I see where the addition of usually food is from the Department or redundancy department.
I have a comment on outdoor sales. I would like the term tent sale included into that language, because there are some businesses that may erect a weekend tent in front of their business to sell leftover merchandise or whatever. At least add it into the definition.
For which one, John?
On outdoor sales, it says, operations including but not limited to farmers' markets, sidewalk sales, seasonal sales. I think tent sale would be appropriate in there.
Chair?
Yes.
Okay, so we... Thank you. We also recognize that tent sales are temporary uses, but they are distinguished between outdoor sales and tent sales because we treat them differently. So, the city, for tents that are 10 or 10 square feet or less, a permit is not required. But we do want to differentiate between the greater tents that are 10 or 10 feet, square feet, more than 10 by 10 square feet, and demonstrate that a special event permit is required. So, we do want to differentiate between those two. Perhaps we could add language that says, see tent standards in the temporary use category?
That's a good idea.
Okay.
Next item up?
Okay, just reading your comments. Thank you. Temporary uses. Okay, so, we restructured this ordinance section and came up with 18 different types of temporary uses, and we put it in an easy-to-read table, understand all the different temporary uses, and if there's a permit required or not. So, the stance that this ordinance takes, and it's ultimately, I'm up for you guys to deliberate, and then city council to also approve with a first reading or second reading, but the stance of this ordinance is that temporary uses are place-making tools, and they're tools that contribute to the economic vitality of a community. So, a temporary use is a mobile vending unit, an outdoor sales facility, a pop-up, a grand opening, a garage sale, and all of these act as tools to attract more people to the city of East Point and contribute to the, like I said, the economic vitality of the corridor. So, we wanted to be more flexible and encourage these types of uses that also support informal economies and help folks, like entrepreneurs, make ends meet, and also entrepreneurs test their products without investing in a brick and mortar. So, we differentiated between a short-term mobile vending unit and a long-term mobile vending unit, and we also differentiated between short-term, long-term, outdoor sales. So, I'll go into those two, because those are similar categories, right now, and then kind of give an overview of the...
Okay, can I ask a question here, Chair? Okay, on most of these, on this chart, where we have short-term and long-term mentioned, can we also include on this chart the definition, or the timeframe in which short-term is, and the timeframe in which long-term is, so that someone, for the ease of using this chart, can look at this and say, okay, I want to be there for X number of days, and then they can look at this chart and immediately see where they fall, without having to go over to the different subsections and read through there to find out what the time limits are? So, let's say mobile vending, short-term, would be, and I'm just going to throw a number out there, 30 days. Under 30 days, and then long-term would be, or whatever it is defined as, whatever the definition is in the text, that we somehow just reflect that also in this chart.
Yes, so before you on the screen, I have an enforcement guide on how to enforce temporary uses, and we have a definition when it's relevant. I try to keep this short and sweet for enforcement officials to use this in an easy capacity. So, mobile vending, short-term, is operates less than eight hours per day, no more than one time per week, and no more than four months a year. And then, they do not need a permit required. However, that doesn't mean that they still don't need permission. If they're approached by a code enforcement agent, the short-term vendor still needs to abide by general standards. And the general standards are, have a property owner permission on the site, also city permission if it's a public space. They must maintain the five-foot pedestrian walkway. They have parking area standards, all of these health code, noise ordinance standards, trash management. These are general standards that all operators must meet.
So then, when you've got this, how about you put in there, see definition of short-term and long-term. If you've got a definition elsewhere in this program... Because I think Commissioner Lubak is looking for a black-and-white definition of what the timeframe is.
No. What I am suggesting is that we put the description on this chart of, for that, what short-term and long-term is, so that you don't have to go chasing to other parts of the ordinance to find that. We're supposed to make this thing user-friendly and easy for somebody, so I've got Jeff's Junk Food Jalopy, and I'm looking at this mobile vending, and I go, do I need a permit or not? Oh, a short-term. And then, I got to go dig somewhere else to find out what short-term means. Maybe I'm just passing through town, and I want to sit up for a day. Well, I got to go somewhere else to find out what that is. Where I'm saying, if we put that definition as additional text under the temporary use column in this chart, it makes it a whole lot easier for the user.
Chair? Heard. Will do. Thank you.
Okay. Just wait to get that a little further on the list. I got a real problem.
Next.
My other question, and I guess it doesn't require a change, but pop-up with business license partner and pop-up without business license partner?
Chair, I'm sorry, was that a question?
Yes.
Yes.
What's the definition of...
Oh, okay. Well, Chair, I was going to present and give definitions on these, so... Okay, so established business license seeking special land use. Are you guys familiar with this? Um, so sometimes a business, like the, the gas station, I think we're here on Crash It, needs a special land use to open up. Um, however, and they're already established business and there's no special land use on file. So the city could provide a temporary permit for them to operate, um, since they're established business. And they're just seeking special land use approvals. So they never formally went through the process because the city ordinance changed since then. Uh, but now they're required to seek a special land use permit because they had a change in ownership.
So it's essentially a grace period?
A grace period, thank you. Okay.
All right.
And then outdoor sales, principal business establishment. This is a principal business that wants to have outdoor sales. Okay, um, outdoor dining, we're comfortable with that term. Pop-up business with a business license partner and without a business license partner. Okay, so then we can go to I-14, and I-12, so G. Okay, um, so pop-ups occupying a space with a valid business license do not require permits. They must meet all general standards. However, pop-ups occupying a space without a valid business license, like a vacant building, must obtain a temporary use permit. So if they have a business license partner, so a partner that, or, um, a business that has a business license, they don't need a temporary use permit. But if they're partnering, or, but if they're not partnering with a temp, with a business license partner, then they need a temporary use permit.
Made perfect sense to me, I don't know if it did to everybody else.
Next.
Thank you. Uh, grand openings. So grand openings do not need a permit required. These are ribbon-cutting ceremonies with a timestamp. All right, yard sales, garage sales, estates, auctions. These sales occur in residential districts. Yard sales are when the city declares a yard sale, no permit is required. But they also must meet the general standards. Garage estate auctions, short-term, long-term, same differentiation in time. So, um, short-term sales, uses can operate less than eight hours a day, no more than one time per week, no more than four months a year. That's how we're defining short-term.
Uh, okay. I believe under the garage sale, estate sale, auctions, short and long-term, those completely shred the intention of our garage sale ordinance in East Point. Because as I read it, I can have a garage sale every Saturday from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, every Saturday from May, June, July, and August. So I essentially am running a weekend flea market. The intention of our garage sale ordinance was to prevent that from happening. That's why it was limited to, I think, three garage sales a year. So that people would not be essentially running a flea market. And under these definitions, we've just allowed them to open up a weekly flea market during the summer.
Chair, thank you. That is why I preface this conversation with the fact that we are defining temporary uses as tools that are, are placemaking devices and tools that contribute to the economic vitality of the community and also help the informal economy. So these are residents trying to make ends meet and sell some items that they have at their house. Uh, but it's up to the city to decide what your stance is on temporary uses and how you would like to regulate them. I saw them as, as garage sales, estate auctions, as similar to outdoor sales, which is why I recommended the same prescription.
But in your definition, you say they are in residential areas. Now they're home-based businesses. And typically around sales like that, which are going to be advertised, you're going to attract a lot of additional traffic to a residential area. Again, I'm going back to the original intent of the city's garage sale ordinance. And the fact here that you say short-term, no permit is required, completely unregulated, which is what we had before we enacted our garage sale ordinance in the city.
Chair. Um, Vice Chair, it is not completely unregulated. So short-terms must meet all general standards. And if you go here, we have a list of all the general standards, which need to abide by the noise control ordinance, trash management, maintain the five-foot pedestrian walkway, and have hours of operation. Also, if we go up to the top, we can notice the, um, which I didn't point out before, thank you, prohibited and violations, just at the beginning of this section. We see item four violations. If a temporary use violates any of its standards, it must cease operations and receive approval to operate by the Office of City Manager, which means it must receive approval by way of license or permit.
Okay. And I don't need a permit, so the city doesn't know I'm doing this. I'm doing it on a Saturday when the code enforcement cars are parked back here for more than twenty-four hours. How do you enforce it? How do you enforce it, I've, that they are in compliance with those general standards? When they're not known about and they're doing it when code enforcement generally isn't operating?
Chair. Uh, so we provided this enforcement guidebook. Um, but code enforcement and police would enforce, as they do, any other site in the city. And like I said, I preface this conversation on the stance of how we want to perceive temporary uses. So I'll leave this up to the decision of, of you as the Planning Commission and how you want to treat temporary uses in your community. I've told you my thoughts and findings.
It seems pretty cut and dry. It seems like either we uphold the ordinance that we have right now or we chuck it and we go this way. I don't see any problem with the ordinance as it's written now. I mean, uh, Councilman DeMonico, have you heard any sort of pushback from the community that they feel that they're being hamstrung by not having more opportunities for yard sales?
I have not heard any feedback on that ordinance.
And if the residents are going to be up in arms, they're certainly going to take it to City Council or that vile Facebook page where everybody's evil. Um, so why don't we just leave it the way it is? And not use that and use what we already have?
Thanks, Gary. If I can, uh, direct a question to Councilman DeMonico. Uh, on the yard sales, is it that residence is limited to two or three permits per year?
I believe it's two, could double-check that pretty easily.
Okay, two permits per year plus the free weekend.
Sure, yep.
So that.
So free if we do a yearly one.
Somewhere between three, possibly four at most.
If we did a second.
As opposed to if, for four months, we conceivably could have seventeen garage sales one day a, a week over that time period.
Yeah.
So. I'm just bringing this, like, up for discussion as to here's, here's what we are doing, which is what our current ordinance was established to prohibit. So I mean, that's a drastic change. Um, I know in my neighborhood, I would not particularly want what I used to see, which was the guy drove around the city every week, loaded up his truck and his trailer with, uh, what would you call those?
Sheenymen.
No, uh, possibly reusable gems. Would drag them home, hose them off, and have an ongoing yard sale with them. Yeah, it's very entrepreneurial, but, um, I don't think it's very conducive to a peaceful neighborhood. You guys got my two cents, and then two cents, and a two cents more on it, so.
The current garage sale ordinance is no person should hold more than two garage sales at any one address within any twelve-month period. Shall not apply to a city-sponsored event. Blah, blah, blah.
Free weekend.
It's saying it doesn't count as one of your two.
Oh, yeah.
Does verbiage use the phrase estate sale and auctions as well?
The name of it is garage sales. It's got a definition here. Any sale of tangible personal property not otherwise regulated, licensed by these ordinances to which the public's invited. Says it includes such events commonly referred to as attic sales, lawn sales, rummage sales, yard sales, moving sales, and flea market sales.
It doesn't say estate sale, which, you know, it's, it might be splitting hairs, but if I pass away tomorrow, then my, my trustee is going to have to go in, set up an estate sale, sell my goods. It's not necessarily a yard sale, or they could auction off my goods. And that would be a short-term thing. So I have no problem if we left this to strike the language that's saying garage sale and maybe include language stating a prof, uh, estate sales or auctions managed by a professional company. Something along those lines. So we allow, you know, people that pass on have the ability for their heirs to liquidate their goods. I mean, again, it's probably splitting hairs, but. Always gotta have something. I do have a lot of wine. So what is our city administration over there thinking?
Chair. I, I don't have any further comment. I can just provide the line of thinking again. And we considered garage estate auctions to be similar to outdoor sales. Um, so that's why we, we assigned the same treatment. The difference is commercial corridors versus residential corridors. Um, but I still maintain that garage sales help homeowners, who, any, people who, yeah, live in a home, anyone, um, make ends meet and contribute to the informal economy.
It sounds good in theory, but there's a limited amount of stuff that people are going to sell. And I can't see garage sales generating such crazy revenue for individuals unless they're doing what Commissioner Lubek said and going around and picking up the gently-used garbage and recycling it. I think I, I'm, I personally like the way it stands right now with the city ordinance.
All right, well, seeing as I started this mess, I'm going to try to put a, an end to it at this point and make a motion to remove references to short-term and long-term garage sales, estate sales, auctions.
I'll support that. Secretary, we have motion and support?
So you want to totally remove it and just leave garage sales as-is?
As-is. As is currently regulated. Yes, that's, that's the intent of the motion.
Really? And then what do you want to do about estate sales, auctions, that aren't in the current motion?
So I said remove all reference to that. What you're reading on these pages here, I'm saying completely remove from this ordinance update.
And then you don't want any ordinance for estate sales or auctions?
Not at this time, since they're all lumped together. They would all stay regulated as they are currently regulated.
Mr. DeMonico, were estate sales and auctions in that ordinance, did you say?
Estate sale was not.
It's not part of the garage sale definition.
Right.
So I think, Mr. Lubek, you're saying then that it just would count as a garage sale probably at this point? It'd be one of your two, uh, limit?
Well, wouldn't you have to include those?
Well, then that's an update of a different ordinance, which is what we're not discussing tonight. We are discussing.
Yeah, I get that. I want to understand when I vote exactly what you wanted, or attempting to do.
Okay.
The definition in the code of a garage sale means any sale of tangible personal property not otherwise regulated. So that would include anything sold at a garage sale, an estate sale, or an auction in my mind. Like, it's all encompassing.
This is why lawyers get the money they get with interpretations.
Although when it says the term garage sale includes such events commonly referred to as attic sales, lawn sales, rummage sales, yard sales, moving sales, and flea market sales, doesn't, it doesn't list estate sales or auctions, but, uh.
But that ordinance could be amended.
Yeah, and it, it includes, it doesn't mean it's excluded, it doesn't state it.
Right.
To me, it's included, estate sales and auctions would be based on that, to me.
Chair.
Yes.
Um, and I'm sorry, Plating Commission, I probably should have mentioned this. We are defining how we want to treat temporary uses here today and then with City Council as we move forward. And then we are amending the city's Code of Ordinances to follow this policy that we're writing today.
Okay. So if I'm understanding what I thought I just heard, you're saying that if we wanted to add the terminology of estate sales and auctions to our current, current ordinance, we could do that tonight? And then that is what would happen moving forward?
Chair, we can discuss that tonight and, um, we could propose that at City Council. But City Council decides what, um, text amendments are approved or denied.
Well, no, I understand that. I'm saying we can propose that tonight and you would include that as part of this ordinance change that would be sent to City Council.
Chair. Yes, the purpose of this conversation is to gain information and tailor an ordinance for the city and present it at City Council.
All right, um, I don't know if we want to move forward as we, as, as I motioned or if you want me to make an amendment to my motion to add estate sales and auctions to our current, uh, what, section thirty-two eighty. Update that to include estate sales and auctions. I will amend my motion to that. Mr. DeHaunt, I believe you seconded that.
I did second it, and I will second that as well.
And I'm sorry, but could you repeat the motion?
To remove the proposed changes on here for garage sales, estate sales, and auctions, long-term and short-term. And to add language to include estate sales and auctions to the current garage sale definitions in section thirty-two dash eighty.
Thank you.
We have motion and support any other discussion. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Lubek?
Yes.
Chairman DeHaunt?
Yes.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Mr. Leland?
Yes.
Mr. Olinsky, yes.
Moving on.
Thank you. Next, we have tents, canopies, and bounce houses. Like we discussed, these require special event permits if the canopy is greater than ten by ten square feet or if there is a bounce house.
Clear. Next.
And then we have construction buildings, structures, and storage. These are all temporary in nature.
Simple.
And then we have portable moving storage containers and roof dumpsters. And those are, that wraps it up.
On the portable moving stor, elsewhere, there's, uh, where did? Oh, when we. Well, when we get to that section elsewhere, I'll, I'll bring up my concern.
Next.
Uh, that wraps it up.
Oh.
Oh, um. I do have some questions under some of the other material in this memorandum.
Before we go there real quick, because we just touched on something, tents ten by ten or greater, or greater than ten by ten require a permit.
Yes.
Does that, does that include residential? Or is that, are we only talking commercial? It's all tents, right? It's everywhere.
Chair, it's all tents.
Yeah. I love that one. I mean, I'm just thinking of somebody who's having a backyard graduation party, and they have a twelve by twelve tent, and they have to get a permit. How much is a permit? Does anybody know?
Theresa, five hundred dollars. I can just imagine what that would cost.
I mean, that seems unreasonable to me if you're, oh, you know, Cardi.
Was this, this was to have a, a special event permit would be needed? Is that what we were saying?
Chair, um, so I'm not so well aware of the special event permit process, but I was informed by city administration that for bounce houses and tents or canopies greater than ten by ten square feet, they require a special event permit. We can discuss that today. Um, that's, that's the standing ordinance.
E, I guess I, I'm not gonna comment on any of that, but the special event permit's a hundred dollars, if it's needed or not, uh.
You're about ready to jump out of your chair, aren't you?
All right. So fifteen years ago and one day, there was a wedding held in a backyard in East Point. There was a ten by twenty tent or canopy set up for food, and then there was a fifteen by fifteen canopy or tent set up for people to dine in. Am I to understand that both of those would have been in violation under this ordinance proposal, and quite possibly were in violation back then as well?
Lawbreaker.
And that actually a special event permit should have been pulled in order to hold a backyard wedding?
Chair, if, um, I can make one comment, um, regarding this recent post by the city about special events, I wouldn't also, I, or I would also not mind clarification on when a special event application is needed or not, or basically the conversation you're having right now. I believe, well, so in our special, one other comment, I guess, in the special event application, it at least, like, indicates a tent larger than ten by ten. They want, like, a flammability, like, certificate sort of thing for fire issues. I know at least, like, you know, one example's when the Odd Fellows does a giant tent for Grashit Cruz, just to make sure the fire department's all right with it. You know, ten by twenty is probably not a huge tent, but at least that's, like, what it says right now on our special event application.
And then I have got to ask, how does that play into a garage sale? Where someone might have a, they're very common, the ten by twenty. Sometimes they're called carports.
Mm-hmm.
But if that were to be set up for a garage sale, you're saying then you would need the additional special event permit and fire department inspection of that tent to hold a garage sale?
Yeah, I don't know if I can, I answer that.
I, seems like a lot of hair splitting, but.
It's also our ordinance, which we want to be correct.
Yeah.
Seems to me there needs to be a component in there that addresses whether it's a commercial use or a private use. Uh, that might clean up the language a little bit.
Yeah, that seems to be the answer to me.
Yeah, and as far as.
I am not arguing that.
And as far as a bounce house goes, I believe that they should have a permit because you've got children, and you want to make sure that equipment is in good shape and not potentially hazardous, you know, if there's, so I have no problem with a permit being needed for a bounce house, but I think that especially tents and canopies greater than ten by ten, we have to differentiate between a commercial use, a private use.
And a private residential use.
And I would go so far as to say, you know, if you have a, a, a church doing some sort of an outdoor revival, because I believe that, um, Emmanuel sometimes will put a big tent out for, uh, the Grashit Cruz. And why are we, you know, he shouldn't have to go and pay a hundred dollars or whatever for a special land use. If he's just doing a, a summer Bible study or whatever, I don't think that that would be a, a problem. I think we have to find a way to clean the language up, you know?
Well, we, we specifically say bounce house, but I've seen the inflatable water slides as well. Used for a child's birthday in a backyard.
Well, how would you feel about, just out of curiosity for the commissioners, how would you feel about a thirty by thirty tent being set up in a private backyard? Thirty by thirty. Is that okay?
What's the function?
Does it matter?
It might, you know, if it's a wedding.
It could be a wedding.
If it's, do you really want a, you know, that's nine hundred square feet.
Right.
God bless you, you got that many people under a tent.
And you've got the room to put it.
Yeah.
And it's not interfering with electrical wires and.
You what?
No, I.
I don't have a problem with that in a, in a residential. I, I mean.
So you would be okay adding a commercial and residential component to this to delineate between?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm, I'm totally of the opinion that the residents should be able to do what they want. I, then I get, I get to the point where, where what's too big, because you don't want people that don't know what they're doing to set up a thirty by thirty tent and have that thing collapse on people. I mean, so, you know, the ten by twenty example, okay, all right, you know, is there just, is there an amount that's too big? And then you say, wait a minute, now we need to protect them from themselves. That's what I'm just saying.
I would think that if somebody were to theoretically erect a tent that large, they would probably be getting it from a commercial business, and most of those people erect those commer- those tents themselves. So maybe that's another component we add in, you know, larger tents are permissible for private use if they are erected by. No?
No?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay if we just say residential's excluded from the provision.
There you go.
What do you guys think?
I'm down.
You're good.
Mar, do you have any concerns, or?
Do you think, Leo?
I think we can add in tents that exceed twenty by forty feet. I'm just looking at the pictures that we have up, um, require a permit irregardless if it's public or private use.
Why twenty by forty? Like, what's your, what's your line?
I just see that it's large.
It's big. Yeah.
Now, ten by twenty is essentially a carport.
Two hundred square feet.
This is like four.
Maybe you just do it by square footage.
That's literally four carports, twenty by forty.
Yeah.
So any tent that exceeds square footage of, what do you think, eight hundred square feet needs to be a permit?
So you just go by four.
I would just go by square footage.
Just go by square footage.
Because a twenty by twenty would be four hundred. I would say anything larger than six hundred square feet would require a.
Six hundred? Okay.
Twenty by thirty, huh?
Twenty by thirty.
I mean, I'm okay with it. I, yeah.
I don't like the, I don't like the idea of a hundred dollars. I don't like the idea of having to pay a hundred dollars to get a permit, because your kid's graduating and you happen to have a lot of friends.
And, and then you may miss it anyways, because you don't even know the ordinance exists, probably more than likely.
And it will most likely be on the weekend when there will be no code enforcement out, and they won't see it. But I think the language in the ordinance does need to be cleaned up, to Councilman Demonic's point. So. So we're good with adding a private or a, a personal and a commercial aspect to this?
Just say it excludes private.
All right, excludes private.
Pretty broad. If you're having, what if it's a private event at a, at a church? See, I think.
Residential.
Residential.
That's what we're looking for.
That's a better word, thank you.
So we say resi- excludes residential and religious functions?
Well.
No.
No, uh.
Only because if a church is having a function, you have a lot of people, more than, well, I guess, it could potentially be.
Well, and I think we have to look at what capacity is on an occupied building with or without a sprinkler system. Uh, you're gonna fit a lot more people under a larger tent. I do think it needs to be NFPA rated.
If you had a fire, you run off the side of the tent.
Not all tents are open-sided. The one that's not burning.
I mean, most tents are open, but you're right, not all of them are. That's true.
Oh, there, there are a lot of event tents that do have partial sides on them.
So you have some commentary for this? Thoughts?
Um.
What are you guys talking about is what she's really thinking?
I, I hear you, and we're good. Residential, um, this excludes residential and tents that exceed twenty by, or six hundred square feet must apply for special event permit.
Uh, let me just haggle on that one a little bit. Well, I know Cardi's been desperately looking things up, and he probably doesn't remember the answer to the question I'm about to ask, but at what size tent are we currently requiring? Fire department inspected for NFPA rating.
Ten by ten in special event app.
Anything over ten by ten.
Requires, like, certificate of flammability, I think, is what it.
Okay, all right. My, my question is answered.
I'll double-check it, and I'll follow up if it's different.
Any further discussion on this?
Not on that, but I do have something else on page four of this memo that.
Well, just to restate though, so we, we decided residential's excluded up to, what, six hundred square feet, right? Anything below six hundred square feet, or six hundred square feet and below. If you're going above it, then, then you have concerns.
That's fairly significant. I'm looking at that rental package on the thirty by thirty. That's fairly significant. Um, so we're okay with the tents?
Yes.
That was an intense.
It was a very intense conversation.
All right. On page four, sorry, grandpa joke.
Bad joke.
Uh, on page four, item number five. It's kind of a general statement about information establishing reasonable liability insurance is carried. How does that affect the typical city named as an additional hold harmless? Fit into that?
Chair, I don't have an answer for that. If anyone else in the room, city attorney, anyone else has an answer for that, please feel free.
Because I know typically when they are looking for liability insurance on festivals and special events, that it's a requirement that, on their liability insurance, the city is also named as an additional hold harmless. So would that also be a requirement of information establishing reasonable liability insurance is carried? Do we also want to have that terminology in there? No, the question's directed at Mr. Albright.
That's something the Plating Commission needs to decide, whether they want that language in there. I mean, it certainly would be a good thing to have, but again, that's, that's a policy issue on behalf of the city.
Well, if you think it's a good thing to have, I think we have our answer.
So we want language added in there that, on the liability insurance, proof of liability insurance, it also names the city of East Point as an additional hold harml- or whatever the legal is.
Additional insured. What li- what limit, though? Right?
I would.
Do you have a recommendation on that, Mr. Albright?
Something like that. I would defer to the, uh, Finance Director for a recommendation. So that's something that Mr. Blum could provide, um, to the City Council when the time comes to approve these amendments.
Very reasonable, right? Thank you.
Um, Chair?
Yes.
On the last page of the special event application, there is a section that lays out the requirement for liability insurance and hold harmless provisions.
Okay.
It is already a part of the process.
Does it, just out of curiosity, does it have a limit?
As I'm reading it now, I do not see a limit.
We still need to establish, so we still need to get, um, we should go to Finance Director.
Yeah, from my understanding of the process and from what I've seen with other special events, it depends on the, the event and all that's involved.
Hmm.
Um, so, you know, if they, if they just have a tent, it's different than if they have, say, like, a fireworks display or something like that, obviously.
Uh, that'll never happen in East Point with the way they rewrote that ordinance.
Well.
They only allow them in brick and mortar that have sprinkler systems in them.
You're done, but I think he's still got some more points, so you're up.
Me? Or are you talking to Mr.?
You've got more points.
Yes, I do. Page five, item E. I have to ask this. That they can get, you know, we're, we're dealing with an established business seeking a special land use up to three months. What if you have a facility that has a capacity rating of two hundred and forty, but does not have a sprinkler system in it, and is required by NFPA standards to have ninety-nine, uh, or less capacity? Is this saying that they can be allowed to operate at that higher capacity for three months?
Chair?
Please.
If we refer to the highlighted portion of this text, it says these businesses may operate with, may operate with a temporary use permit at the discretion of the building official.
So you're saying, or that they could flat-out refuse to give them the permit? Or they could allow them to have the permit with restrictions? Like, we'll give you a temporary use permit, but you have to drop your occupancy maximum while you're speak, seeking the special land use? And if you're curious where those numbers came from, I think we should all be very aware of what this could have applied to.
You have no comment?
Chair, uh, so this policy is up for us to deliberate and strengthen, um, the building official acts to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. That's all I can say.
So where is your?
I guess my suggestion would be to add terminology in there that at the, the discretion of the building official may impose additional restrictions?
Mr. Chair, I think the language as drafted already is broad enough to provide the building official with such discretion.
Okay.
Powers.
Yeah, I will accept your opinion, city attorney.
You're welcome.
Next.
All right. Mobile vending, item four, number one, C. During hours of non-operation, the mobile vendor must be removed from the site. And maybe it's just because this one has been irritating me since January. Someone has had a food truck parked on a major, on private property in a major intersection in East Point since January. It is there twenty-four seven. I am not going to, uh, I guess I am going to editorialize on this. I have a problem overall with mobile vendors coming into the city, taking advantage of what the city has to offer, and offering nothing back to the city as a brick and mortar does in terms of taxes and licensing fees. But anyway, I guess I don't have a problem with this. I'm just wondering maybe where the enforcement is on this. I don't know if anybody else has any comments or concerns about it? I mean, I know they're, they're new, they're the up, up and coming fad, but you know, brick and mortar has invested in this community where mobile vendors generally do not have
Chair?
That same investment.
Brick and mortars are now switching their culture to welcome mobile vendors as an extension of their business and to enhance place making opportunities and visibility to attract more customers to their property.
Don't necessarily agree with that, but.
Well, I guess if I own a franchise burger establishment, and I'm paying taxes, water bills, licensing fees to the city, and Bob's Burger Buggy comes and parks across the street from me and is siphoning business away from me, you know, well, I'm glad business B that allowed Bob's Burger Buggy to be there is enhancing his business, but to, to the detriment of a stakeholder in our community. It's just a you know, personal issue.
Chair?
Please.
We have general standards A and B highlighted on the screen, so a vendor must provide evidence of written permission from the property owner of the site. A vendor that extends beyond the property lines shall require the permission of the affected property owners. If the site is located on public property in front of a storefront, then the vendor must receive the business owner's permission to operate.
That's not addressing my concern. If I own Frank's Florist, and I said Bob's Burgergerburn or Burger Buggy can open in my parking lot, yeah, that's all fine and dandy, that meets this requirement. But what about Joe's Burger and Fries who's got an established building, is paying taxes, paying water bills, is paying licensing fees to the city? It's detrimental to his business. And this comes more into play, let me say, under long term.
Chair, we could extend this conversation to be if Frank's Florist, or whoever we said, had an adjacent building that was vacant and Bob's secondary Burger King came in and opened right next door. Uh, the same if scenario can happen either way, if there's a temporary use or a vacant storefront that fills in with a similar use next door. So we can throw out a lot of ifs.
Yeah, yes.
However, this policy is up to the planning commission.
But the fact of the matter is, under all those temporary ones being set up, it's to the detriment of the city by way of being a detriment to the person that's invested in the city. Uh, we don't have to have this conversation tonight. Uh, unintended vending units, a mobile vending unit shall not be left unattended for longer than fifteen minutes. Again, I'm thinking of the one particular one that I have in mind that is probably vacant. I don't know, what'd you say, fourteen hours a day?
You're talking about the trailer at Nine Mile and Grashit?
Maybe, but yes.
Call it the way it is.
Yes, yes, that food trailer that has
The Amoco.
Been there at the Amoco station since January. All right, you'll be happy to know I've made it all the way to page twelve.
We all are happy.
Uh. On one of these, it's just, uh, section M five A. I think what was intended to be said there is one trailer per builder or contractor rather than one builder per builder or contractor. And then on page thirteen, section N one. We, we are referring to portable of such things, uh, portable moving and storage containers. Uh, if someone is in the process of moving, uh, they're not likely to have an active building permit. So based under this regulation, they then would be ineligible to have a portable moving unit at their disposal?
Chair?
Yes?
I understand what you're saying, Vice Chair. The intent of this section is just to refer to construction, portable dumpsters. Perhaps, and we, this is up for discussion, but perhaps temporary uses, yes, don't need a portable dumpster?
I'm not referring to the dumpster part of that definition. I am referring specifically to the portable moving and storage container portion of it. So whether it's a business or a residence, if they are moving, and they wanna go and rent one of the portable moving, um, containers to put their stuff in, to, uh, facilitate their move, they cannot do it without an active building permit, according to the way this is written. Now, if I'm moving from one location to another, how do I even apply for a building permit to do that? I mean, if, if I can see the active building permit if it was in the case of a remodeling. But what about in the case of moving? Where you're not gonna have a building permit? You're just gonna wanna put the thing up there, you wanna cram as much of your stuff into it as you can, and then you're gonna have the company come pick it up, drop it off on the other side of the city at the new address you're moving into, so you can unload it. Well, now technically, you would need two building permits, one on the building you're moving out of, and one onto the building you're moving into.
Do you have any, sorry, Chair, do you have any revisions, suggested revisions?
Can I ask for clarification? So, I, I mean, if I'm reading this, I understand what you're saying totally. But when you read active building permit, so, let me back up a little bit. In accordance with the following standards, okay, these are, are just standards. So, under the active building permit, I'm taking it as a home improvement or construction project. If I look under duration, I'm thinking, okay, I'm just moving, so I'm just worried about this duration part.
But if you read the way it's written, portable moving and storage containers and roll off, roll off dumpsters require a permit and shall be reviewed in accordance with the following standards, and the first thing it says is an active building permit.
For home improvement or construction project.
But what about moving?
If I look at duration, it says a single portable moving and storage container may be placed on an occupied lot for the purpose of loading, unloading personal belongings to be transported to another location. That would be if I'm, I'm, I'm moving.
So you can put a pod in your driveway for up to fourteen days?
So Jeff, maybe, maybe what you're saying is the definition in N itself needs to be revised? Because all those things are true below it, maybe it's just the statement above. So instead of requires a permit, may require a permit if the below is true? Right, Jeff? Is that what you're?
Well, let me reread this. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Yulinski. I'm reading this in a, with a different interpretation now than when I had originally read, so. Because actually, number one contradicts number two.
It kinda does, but. I, I at first thought two, but then I'm also thinking, well, I'm not, I'm not doing home improvements, I'm not doing construction, so no, I don't need that.
And maybe one and two might be better combined. First state the duration, then as listed in number two, and then add secondarily the language that the portable moving and storage containers or roll off dumpsters in conjunction with home improvement or construction are permitted for the duration of the active building permit. I think if you combine those two, it would make a lot more sense. Because when you put active building permit out there as a specific point, it definitely allows for the interpretation that the building permit is required.
I, I don't disagree, but then if I read it, I'm like, nope, it's not me.
But then I have to ask the question, so in the case of an active building permit, are you allowed more than a single container? Because number two limits you to a single container.
So do we wanna stipulate a quantity if you're doing home improvement or construction? And then that puts the burden on the place of how many they would have to get in cost.
Mr. Albright?
Mr. Chair, I would recommend, in light of the discussion regarding the storage containers, that perhaps have a list of standards and then have an exception provision that says this section does not apply to X.
Well. I guess I think if we were if we were just to combine one and two, starting with the verbiage of two, and then the second part of it, adding in the verbiage of one would be would actually make the point. Because it's, again, from the Department of Redundancy Department, that label as an active building permit, I mean, is already stated in the verbiage there for the duration of the permit.
Or, or simply, you just, it would read portable moving and storage containers and roll off dumpsters require permit, um, and then talk about the duration, um.
Well, it does say that on the previous.
Right, and then, and then just have exceptions, this section shall not apply to the following, and then list the instances where it would not apply, for instance, if someone is moving out of their home temporarily over the course of, you know, the weekend or something like that. And perhaps should be more, a little bit more fact specific on the exception portion, and then that leaves anything not covered by the exceptions is then subject to a permit.
But as I'm reading this, even if you're moving, you would need to get a permit from the city.
Yeah, that's why I recommend.
And I, I guess I don't have a problem with that. But again, I think one and two are both talking about durations, it could be combined effectively into one point.
Or not even have a, a durations section at all, and just say, um, portable moving and storage containers and roll off dumpsters require a permit, period, and then an exception, this, this section shall not apply to the following.
Seems appropriate.
And then for the planning commission to determine what would be included in the exception portion.
Well, see, I kind of think that the, under the duration part, to me, is more specifically for residents who are, are moving in and out. Period.
All right, well, let me suggest that let's split a baby here. Uh, taking duration, put an A in there, which would have the current terminology. Put a B in there, which would incorporate the terminology of number one.
So that I like better, um, so up to fourteen days would be for moving.
Right.
Is there, do we want a duration?
Well, the duration is.
Can you even ask for a duration if it's a business?
Absolutely. Um.
See, I guess that's where you would split the hairs, right?
If I said, I'm thinking if you just said duration and subdivided it, first one, and you can pick which order you put them in, I don't care. I'm not gonna get that picky about it, but you could use a verbiage that's already under one and already under number two, put them in a one section that says duration.
Oh, I gotcha, right, yes, yes.
That would, would make it absolutely clear, and you wouldn't get some knucklehead to misread it.
Yes, got it, because for building, it's for the duration of the active permit.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, I gotcha.
Cause I mean, that is
Right.
That is actually dealing with duration anyway.
Right, I gotcha.
Is that sufficient for you, Mr. Albright?
I was gonna defer to Ms. Mara on that.
Because I mean, our language is always here, I just think if we massage it a little bit, it's going to fit what we want without a lot of additional maneuvering.
Mar, do you have that recommendation?
Chair? The recommendation's clear. Thank you.
Okay.
I don't see any more red marks.
Well, on page 14...
All right, we're moving on. He's got no more red marks.
Oh, Chair. I just have one thing to address from public comment regarding zoning ordinance. Do you want me to do that now?
Please.
Okay. So we heard from the public asking about the definition of short-term rental, and the zoning ordinance defines short-term rental as "a transient vacation rental or use in which overnight accommodations are provided in dwelling units to guests for compensation for periods of less than 30 days."
So that would include Airbnb and whatever all the other ones are?
Chair? If the accommodation is less than 30 days, then yes.
So, you market it that you have to rent it for 31 days?
All right.
So...
Can we move on?
Well, at this point, I think we, we need a motion to recommend the approval of the revised zoning ordinance amendments to City Council.
I'm assuming you'll make that motion?
I, yes. Yes, if the council, if the commission is ready for that motion to be made, then I just made it.
We have a motion. Do we have support?
Support.
We have motion and support. Secretary, please call the roll. Secretary, please call the roll.
I heard you.
She, she's writing down all the particulars and batting all the Ts and crossing all the Is.
My Is are crossing. That's what I know right now.
I'm going to make you be secretary one day, and you just see how...
It's a thankless job.
Mr. Lubek?
Yes?
Ms. Yulinski, yes. Mr. Brol?
Yes.
Mr. Laland?
Yes.
Chairman DeHaan?
Yes. We have no unfinished business, so we can take that off the schedule. Now open the second hearing of the public. You have three minutes to speak. The floor is yours. Does anybody wish to be heard?
There's three minutes. Don't even talk to me about time. I can't get back now.
Good evening. I'm sorry, I'm laughing because I had intended to be here for the first hearing of the public and got caught up in the enjoyment of the concert, so...
Ready to dance, Chief.
I don't know if this is a punishment or what, but I do appreciate the fact that I have sat here and listened, because it supports or confirms what I was going to say. I appreciate the fact that the Planning Commission does the heavy lifting for all of the decisions that have to be made. I don't know if I could handle that, but what I'm looking at is it makes more sense for the Planning Commission to do it with the expertise of, of city planner and others to make sure that when, by the time it gets to council, hopefully, it shouldn't require any heavy lifting or long discussions on the part of the council. And that's a direct reflection of what happened the other night. So I do appreciate the work that you do, and I would hope in the future that if everyone has read the recommendation that comes from you and needs clarification before council meeting, that type of five-hour meeting won't be necessary. Yeah, I'm being critical, but that's the way I feel about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else wish to be heard? Seeing none, we're closing the second hearing of the public. So I need to do an informal poll here. I really wanted to get...
Table.
Hold on. I really, I wanted to get through, especially the training on making tough decisions, but quite frankly, we've been here a long time. So I'd like to take an inter, an informal poll. Do we take it on tonight, or do we table it till October? But we have to promise that we do this in October. And the reason why I'm so adamant about this training is, I don't think people realize that sometimes we have to make decisions that we don't like, but legally, we have to do it. And it would be nice to get it on the record so people can understand. So, informal poll. Do we table till October or take it on tonight?
Table.
Let's make the tough decision to table it tonight.
Sheila?
I'm pretty sure I was the first one.
Well, there's three we've lost if we're going to take it on, so.
Oh, come on.
We're going to table, because we're tired. So Brigitte will have this. But there will be no turning back. We have to take it on. Yes, so let's, can we get a motion to table training?
I thought Commissioner Laland made a motion.
That was an informal poll.
Oh.
So can we get a motion to table training in the quarterly planning report?
So be it.
We have motion. Do we have support?
Support.
We have motion and support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms., oh, Ms. Yulinski, yes. Mr. Laland?
Yes.
Mr. Brol?
Yes.
Mr. Lubek?
No.
Chairman DeHaan?
Moving on to Commissioner comments, we'll start with Ms. Bruszkiewski.
Again, thank you for having me. It's good to see you. It's good to get back into business, and I'll see you in November.
Thank you. Mr. McCain?
Good evening, Planning Commission. Good to see you all this evening, and thanks to those of you that were able to come out a little bit early to enjoy the concert. We didn't have a huge audience like we'd had previously, but I could tell that the folks that did come out really enjoyed it. So if you are available, please come out for, yes, Commissioners Yulinski and Lubek in particular, I know we're here early, so, thank you. If you're available, please come out for a final concert of the season, which, if you were able to attend the June concert, we're bringing back Soundproof that performed at the library this time for two hours. Again, it'll be in the amphitheater, excuse me, on September 28th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., so please come out and join us. Other than that, great work tonight, and I will see you next month. September 28th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
That's my birthday.
Nice. Celebrate your birthday with us.
Maybe.
Maybe. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Mr. Albright?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to publicly recognize and congratulate Commissioner Yulinski on the beautiful addition to her family.
Thank you. She's dressed for game night tonight, by the way.
Councilman DeMonico?
Ditto to what Mr. Albright said to you, Sheila.
Thank you.
Very cute photos. That's all. I don't think I have anything tonight.
Mr. Laland?
I have no comments.
Ms. Yulinski?
Mrs. Hall Rayford left, but I have to second her comments and am highly disappointed that the banquet hall was able to twist everything around and not tell complete, full things that took place for hours on end at those Planning Commission meetings twice, and was able to get something approved on total deceit. Very saddened by it. I, I feel that the work we put in on that and for it to all go down the drain was a little heartbreaking to learn about. Other than that, I think everything else is good.
Mr. Brol?
We had a good meeting tonight. I guess the only thing I'd say is thank you to the people in the crowd that stuck around to hear us out. Thank you.
We feel the faithful.
Mr. Lubek?
Our posse.
Thank you, Chairman.
Our groupies.
Congratulations, Busha.
Thank you.
Grandchildren are wonderful. Brief piggyback on your comment about the total experience, or as I referred to it Tuesday night at the council meeting, the total ordeal. I cast a dissenting vote on that because I felt the applicant didn't have any credibility, and boy, did that play out on Tuesday night. It said, it's done, we're going to have to move forward, and the city's going to have to deal with the consequences of that decision. Another note, I mentioned earlier in the proceedings about a wedding that took place 15 years and one day ago.
It was Jeff's.
I am the guilty party. I got to give a shout-out to my bride, Lois. She's fantastic. She's the one that allows me to be here. She puts up with me after the meetings, which can be quite an ordeal. If you think I have a lot of questions at these meetings, you just don't want to put on her shoes. But I couldn't ask for a better partner in life, and because of her, I have three grandchildren, which is fantastic. Other than that, I appreciate your tolerance with me. Sometimes I get so over-focused in what I'm reading that I misread it. For that, I apologize. For being thorough, I will never apologize. I try to do my absolute best with everything, and spent a lot of years on the zoning Board of Appeals where I saw the effects of bad ordinances that just didn't fit our city. And that's why I'm so happy that we're in a new era here. We've got a fantastic city planner. We're trying to look forward, but we're also willing to look at the reality of what's going on in the city and try to match things. I've heard from a few zoning Board of Appeals meetings, we're no longer needed. Well, yes, you are. It's a state requirement that you exist. But we never have any meetings. Well, then I guess we're doing our job in that we wrote ordinances that fit the city, and we don't have to have 27 cases a month come at us to fix things because an ordinance was written in a vacuum and it just doesn't fit our city. And also have to thank Mr. Albright for his, I guess baptism into the city many years ago, when we did the original group of ordinance revisions. Which brings me to the sad point, I'm sure it's well-known by now. Former councilwoman, former chair of the Planning Commission, Colleen Cohen, lost her life while on vacation in North Carolina. And that still hits me deeply. Thank you.
I always hate having to pick up after a down note. Congratulations to Lois Lubek for putting up with you for 15 years. God bless that lady for keeping you on the straight and narrow.
I'll mention, my parole was turned down. I tried to get off on good behavior. They talked to Hearn. That wasn't going to fly.
He got his stay of execution. Congratulations, Ms. Yulinski. I have to reiterate the points that my fellow commissioners made about the total event slash my personal favorite now, total disappointment. I voted yes, because I thought the man was going to do what needed to be done. I wanted to give him a shot. And some screenshots were sent to me recently of individuals that patronized Ray's Boom Boom Room. And the conversation between these people was, oh, well, Ray's Boom Boom Room is moving So that concerns me greatly. I feel like I've just been baited and switched. And after what I saw at the city council meeting, the demeanor of the attorney, I will say no more on that because I was beyond disgusted. Just incredibly disappointed. And I am scared to death that we have just unleashed potential typhoon in this city. But I'm going to pray that I'm wrong. Having said that, I do want to just touch base again on the training that we didn't do today. We all have to eat a lot of poop sandwiches sometimes. We have to make, I cleaned it up. We have to make some decisions, and I would, I would say that Councilman DeMonico as well is in the same boat. He's got to make decisions that nobody likes. But they're usually based, our decisions are based in fact, legality. If I could vote my personal opinion, there would be not one more event hall in the city. If I could personally vote my views, there would be no more daycares, but we can't. We have to vote what the law says. So, there was a gentleman in one of the resident groups that was pretty much slandering the Planning Commission during the event hall decision, saying that it was all a done deal and that we did this. And I kept trying to explain to this man that we make recommendations, it goes to city council. And it just, it saddens me, the depths of what people don't seem to understand. We're not the ultimate body. We make recommendations. Councilman DeMonico and his peers, they make the decisions. So, we try and give them as good of information as we can. What they do with it is up to them. With that said, it is now 9:49. Can I get a motion to close the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
We have motion. Do we have support?
Support.
Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Yulinski, yes. Mr. Lubek?
Yes.
Mr. Brol?
Yes.
Mr. Laland?
Yes.
Chairman DeHaan?
Yes.